Three digits, you gotta make sure it keeps draining too though, so that's where it's just. You're either gonna have to design a decent road project and make it certified road and do it, or I don't know if there's really another option. So that's the, that's the question.
Right.
You'd have to cut in back slopes, build it up, you know, do. Three to one, four to one slopes, and you're gonna have to make sure that water drains and then doesn't impact the next person down the road. You might end up building that other piece too. I mean, maybe you just need to add a culvert on it. Maybe you have to have that mile yet. I don't.
See, I don't know. I know it's one by Larry's. They're one north and south. That's a bad spot too, Liam.
Well, there's a low area down there by those trees. Like right, right that, eh, but I don't think that gets as bad. I know at one point he was driving around it, then someone put some spikes up or something and some flat tires.
Is that guy being slammed there?
Yeah, I could show you.
Yeah, it was a pretty good feud back then, but.
Yeah, but they get along.
But I mean, that's where, I mean, the big question is just gonna be, what's it gonna take to actually make it so it doesn't block in with snow so easy and all that stuff? And that's just.
I think that's all he's getting at. He just can't get out of Congress, just with enough snow in there.
Well, I can see that, cause it's flat.
Right, I mean, that's the hard part, is to build it up and.
I mean, we did have, Woold did do the surveying out there and found the center line, the center line to that section line, that was the one that went into court. I think it went all the way to the Supreme Court or something like that, State Supreme Court. So, I mean.
So that section line is.
Should go farther west, but.
Then that section line got nailed down though?
Yeah.
I, I think it did, and I wasn't upon the section line, was it? Or not entirely?
Yeah, there was some. We're looking at it to the north. There was some, this should be pretty accurate.
It's almost.
That's come, this is the core.
That's your board.
I mean, we're talking, if we're gonna do it right and make it, cut back slopes and balance the dirt and everything like that, then. I would, I would want Woold to, to design it and everything like that, so.
Who's gonna build it? Who's gonna build it? Who's gonna run scrapers to do that?
You're retired, aren't you?
Hey, we gotta save money, Terry. We can't be dishonest.
And that other becomes the other thing.
Yeah.
We're, I mean, we have some, we have a pretty big project that we have to do in-house, a couple of big projects that we have to do in-house this year.
Well, I guess the question is, I don't think, I think we can talk about this month after month, but I don't think we can really make an educated decision here unless we. Decide what we're gonna do. And from that, I mean, are we gonna build it that far? If we do, then we should have Woold work up a design and figure out. And, and you know, otherwise, if we're not willing to do that, then we're basically not doing anything, because there's no Band-Aid, just send the blade out there. Cause I don't think blade is the issue. It's the slope and the flatness. So, and if you're gonna just build it up. You gotta kinda do it right, otherwise, I mean, I don't even, I mean, we discussed too, the sandiness, the borrowing of the dirt, building it up. You gotta make it a part of a project, which means you're probably gonna end up leasing or purchasing some right-of-way, and if you're gonna do that, then that's all fine. But then we need to make that decision, probably get it designed like Skyler's saying. And if it's too big of a project, or you know, it might have to get put out for bids. And if it gets put out for bids, then the other question is, is does the county pay for it, or do we talk like we have before, where we start thinking about specials? I mean, I don't, I don't think there's any just quick solution to fix this, so we either gotta decide to either just be done talking about it, we're not doing nothing. Or we gotta move forward with some kind of a design and just build it up like a regular piece of certified road and be done with it. Cause otherwise, we sit here and we talk about the same bullet points all the time.
Is it done?
Well, we gotta, I, I, you know, he's been after that a long time, but so back when Nick was on, when I first got on, he's been asking that already.
Yeah, he promised him. Nick promised him, you know, we're gonna do something.
Well, tons of promises shouldn't have been made, but still, I, 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 I feel like for the sake of discussion, before we even write it off, we should just get it designed. I mean, let's face it.
The what's the cost gonna be to do it?
Well, even the engineering cost, I don't know. I mean, I don't even wanna quote a number, because that's not fair, Woold, but. I mean, what would a preliminary just?
Yeah, it's not gonna be cheap. I mean, we're talking over, probably over a hundred thousand, just engineering.
Just to design it?
Just the engineering design.
I mean, even just to get it bid ready?
Really?
Yeah, eighty, eighty thousand. I mean, to do that for construction, I don't know what the train looks like, but. I mean, construction, just a guess, million dollars. I mean, that's just a guess.
I think just.
John's not gonna throw out a number that's not close. I mean, even if he's off ten percent, you're still talking anywhere for.
A hundred thousand, huh?
Now, people, that's what I'm saying, you're talking nine hundred thousand to one point one million, then.
I mean, just roughly.
And John does this for a living, so.
Yeah, two years ago, we did one point three miles, and that was over a million dollars. I mean, that was two years ago, and that's kind of the exact same situation.
Where you're probably purchasing a little right-of-way and maybe moving a utility, putting matches, culverts, so.
I would say go out and take a look, what you got, a guy could do to build it up a little bit, so he didn't have to drive through a model all the time and.
Keep it simple.
Keep it simple, yeah. Just so, you know. Okay, so he could use it a little bit, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we sure can come up with a different alternatives, but I mean, you're gonna have. It's not gonna be cheap either way. I mean. We try to do it in-house and do something small, obviously we can save some money, but. Then in another ten or fifteen years, is that gonna be good enough for him?
I mean, that's the problem with the Band-Aid scenarios, it's never, it's never good enough in the long term. It doesn't, I mean, it doesn't matter if it's Dave, it's somebody else then. Even maintain, and even maintaining it though, if you don't build it out of solid material, which you might not be able to find around there. It's not gonna maintain anyway, and it's probably gonna whittle apart, so. You're gonna have to go and borrow some good material and haul it in there to at least build it up, but then I don't know what you do with the water too, so I don't know.
I know what it's like driving into Larry's yard off the highway, that's sad. Oh, it's insane. You can't hold it.
Yeah, we'll do it, I'll work with Woold a little bit on some stuff and see if we can come up with that.
Talk to Dave, see which are the best, see which spots there, try to just concentrate on those couple of spots or whatever.
Yeah, we can. Sometimes if you concentrate on those spots, they just push those spots somewhere else, and they just made another bad spot, so. We'll work on it, so. I don't know if you guys wanna make a.
If the official, if the official, we're not going with the design, then.
No, no.
Just want to.
Hundred, hundred dollars, hundred dollars.
Just to clarify it, so we're, we're looking more of a Band-Aid option and some kind of way to just build up certain spots. If you can figure out a viable option, if you wanna work with John and survey data and see if you can. Come up with something to make it a little more drivable, I guess, see if you can bring an idea forward to us or something.
Good, we will, we will work with that.
Something feasible? Okay. Didn't mean to put you on the spot there, John, but we just, everyone just never did it. It gets kinda lost on people, like, oh, just get a design, but it sounds easy.
Fifty thousand, I bet, easily. Fifty thousand at least, engineering, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, to get a decent design for me, you were taking that quarter, you had two weeks of work, at least. That's like zero hours.
That's with multiple people doing multiple facets of it.
Yeah.
Hey, Josh.
Who's not talking about what's in there?
Right on where?
At the end of the.
On the end, on the west end?
Yes, right there.
Like this stuff?
No, he's talking the west end of that road, it's where Larry's is there.
Where it starts to south.
Yeah, so on the corner.
There is no corner.
This is where it turns south.
Wasn't there some grain there, or another, isn't that that other house?
This is the most area of H G.
Where's that, where's that, uh, Grayman house?
Yeah, right there.
Right there.
What, what, Grayman?
That's not.
That's up here, you know?
Yeah, yeah, that's not, that's farther out there.
Get back to the end of where.
Well, they live there full-time on the Grayman?
Right there.
Like this?
Yeah, what's there? Actually, they turned it, actually, it looks pretty neat.
They turned a gray into a.
Both in a camper move?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, so where's, where's days from there? You go down south.
David goes to south, then you go west, and then south again.
Apparently Commissioner Materia doesn't have H G T V. You can build a house out of anything these days, so.
Should we go in there?
Yeah. I'm like, you're shocked, huh? That's the new thing.
I actually got one lying there.
Yeah, well, we need, we need to move it out, so, well, you can come up with an alternative.
Okay, we'll work a little bit together.
Some kind of a, of an in-house alternative or something, I would be curious.
Anything else for Woold before he takes off, or?
I don't think so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll.
Okay, next item here, quick, with the Tarn Westfield Church lot, if you took any other information or reasoning to do so or not do so?
Uh, I guess I just didn't really look into, I mean, I looked, went out there, looked at it and figured out roughly, I mean, no, the guys haven't done it for a few years. So some of the cracks are getting worse. I mean, we'd be probably thirteen hundred dollars to crack seal it, and, and that's with sweeping it too. Cause it'll have to be swept, cause it's sandy, so.
I talked to some church, they said they were gonna take care of it.
Okay, so then.
They want it done?
They're gonna do it.
The Westfield Church is gonna do it themselves? Okay.
Great, takes that.
Peace work.
Yep, then we're done with it. We don't have to, like you said, they, they contacted us last year and then. So good, then that's, that's done, so.
Another quick thing then, is the road maintenance agreement with Campbell Township. Doesn't look like much has changed really. That all seems, that's really a non-wish area.
Right, but I don't.
Keep it at.
Okay.
When we do three hundred and fifty per mile rating, there's no removals, two hundred per hour, we keep that same.
Is that enough?
This year?
Yeah. Yeah, it's very cheap this.
I think we updated last year, didn't we?
We did, well, we updated the, uh, the blazing and stone removal, I think we went to four fifty a certified mile, and that used to be at like two fifty. So, I mean, I don't know, nothing's really, it doesn't really take up a lot of our time, I mean.
No, cause they have some federal aid roads that run through there, so.
So we're kinda, the guard is up there a lot anyway, and actually, it seems like they kinda do a little bit of their own work. I mean, they do.
Yeah.
They get some neighbors coming around, township members, and they must do a little bit of it. We don't really go out of our way too much for Campbell Township.
Well, we don't, yeah. So I think we're probably okay this year again.
Yeah.
The road south of, right, south of the, um, County Shop? A road?
Yep.
There's some pretty, culverts there, it's, should you put the sign for bumps or?
Yeah, we can, we'll come put some signs up for some bumps. It's, now in the summertime, it'll, it'll go back up. It's just.
Highway thirty-four sure moved too lately, if you've driven on that thing.
It's weird, once we cut them open to fix them, then that'll start moving.
But even the Ross and stuff, that, that's a rough piece of road again, dude.
No, you can definitely put some.
Talking about signs now, will Joy answer, where's some stop sign missing, you get put them up?
That's the state, right?
That's, yeah, cause.
That's the state.
Yeah, we just ran into that. I can't think of where we did, cause I just have to, I just called Rick Maston about that.
Yeah, I can't remember where.
Just go on eighty-three.
Yeah.
There, there, when you come from where, what's his name, uh, Brian Jacob, is that Lou Feedlot in Posnor, the Bumgarner Lake? There's no stop sign coming out of that.
Why don't they have one there?
If that's the state, they said, they said, because no one lives back there. Oh, Rick.
Yeah, but Rick.
Nobody comes out on the main highway, they said it's up to the state, they said, they said it's county discretion. And then the county says it's state's discretion.
Well, I can talk with Rick.
I know Rick was, when I told him about a certain, I cannot think of the road, but it, it didn't happen that long ago, and I told him about it, and he said, oh yeah, that's ours. And so anything like right off the road in that right-of-way of theirs.
Well, they got a hundred.
They do, right, so they, so, I, he didn't even argue, and he's like, oh yeah, no, we'll do that, and they took care of it, and I cannot remember which one it is now, but.
What street is that? Just north of Bumgarner Lake, the road to Tom Fisher, the next road going in, going back to Jenkins.
Like eighty-fourth or something there?
Right.
Eighty-fourth or eighty-fifth or something in that neighborhood there.
Is that what it is?
North of Bumgarner?
North of Bumgarner Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause the one going by Shells is eighty-fourth, so.
Yeah, there's a stop sign there.
Like eighty-fifth or something there.
But that one has no stop sign.
Okay.
And it's, I have a nephew run through, and I want to help you, a knight.
Yeah, well, we should, uh, get a motion on this, uh, road maintenance agreement, unless anybody's got any issue about the entering with Campbell County, or Campbell Township again.
I'll make a motion, man.
Commissioner Edley makes a motion to approve the road maintenance agreement with Campbell Township.
Okay.
It's seconded by Commissioner Materia, any more discussion? Not any, any, all the papers say aye. Close. Well, that's done.
Is there anything they done with that Mossup, the camera question?
No.
You can't.
No, we're gonna wait till it gets, it's springtime. Take it off right away. It's one of our top priorities list.
Yeah, should be able to do it soon, though, I mean, the weather's starting to get.
Yeah, it looks.
Yeah, today's.
Yeah, we'll wait around a half hour, if, if summer come on, it'll all melt, so don't worry, but, uh. Um, another one was gravel road owned by, um, owned by the county on lot twenty-five A, and this is the one with, um. Tina and the, uh, the Walther, you know, where the road was going through their lot. So she said that, um, they'd be willing to sell to the county.
They will?
Yep, um, I talked to Joe about it, um, he said there's no issues with purchasing it that he knows about, um. They were hoping to get forty thousand dollars for the lot. So. I guess the main decision is, um.
So we.
If we wanna buy, what we wanna pay for it, so.
We could replod and sell it again?
We could, um, a couple of issues is that it's a relatively small lot, so you're, I mean, missed in theory, if it's point four acres, and you take the road out. You're gonna end up with a quarter of an acre, maybe less. You know, does that make it appetizing for the neighbors around it?
Sure.
They could, right, I, I mean, those are kind of the options, but I think the, I mean, the main question is, is whether or not you wanna purchase the lot, which you wanna pay for it. I mean, those are the big questions right now. What we do with it afterwards, whether we hold it and use it for anything else, or whatever, I mean, it's.
Why wouldn't Walters take that and do what we wanna do, and just sell it to the adjacent landowners?
They don't wanna mess with it, basically, what they, I mean, they just, Tina and her sisters own it, and they just, they wanna sell it. They have no use for it, they don't wanna, the other thing is, is it's really too small to really develop specifically as a lot. You know, but, um. But for the neighboring lots, or you know, people on the other side of the road or something, whatever, then that's where.
You think they'd buy that?
Well, I, I don't think you'd have a problem reselling the lot, but the, the main question is, is selling the lot right now to anybody else. You have a road encroachment on it, so that's probably gonna decrease the value of it, so.
Well, that's what I'm saying, we buy it and replod it, and we're good.
Well, whatever you wanna do, I'm, I'm just telling you that.
Should we push the road out then?
Tina wants to sell.
We wouldn't have to take the road out again.
No, we would just leave the road where it's at and just plod it out of that.
They replod it, then just.
It was basically that, I mean, the ideal thing would be to either own the entire lot, so that we don't have the road encroaching on a lot. Or to parcel off the road.
Right.
And sell the remainder, keep the remainder, or whatever, I'm just.
Well, cause it would be in the same boat that sell the lot to somebody else.
Right, you have a road encroaching on it.
Well, we buy it and plod the road out of it.
That way, yeah, that's about the only thing you can do, because otherwise, you leave it, try and sell the lot.
Well, no matter what, us buying it takes the road encroachment issue out of the, out of it. Whether you sell off the remainder or hold the whole lot, really doesn't matter. It's just the main thing is that that specific piece of road is encroaching on a lot.
There'd be no use for the county to own it, or something, why not just create it?
That's a decision that can be made later. The question is, is whether or not we wanna buy it, and if we do, what do we wanna pay for it? I mean, that's the big question. You know? I mean, my only question really is that, um. That lot existed with the road encroachment there long before the county even inherited it, so. Is it, you know, really our problem?
To our place, you just.
Well, I mean, the, the only question about it, I mean, I, I think for the sake of keeping everything, keeping the integrity of the area and stuff, it's not a bad idea to buy it. At the same token. I mean, that lot existed with the road encroaching it way before the county even got involved, so is it really our problem at all, so? I mean, that's my question, that's the one.
Like, looking at this thing, the road should be pushed to the right, correct? In order to be in the lines with everything, that's something like.
Theory, yeah.
Right?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is that fence line, when we just looked at Google Earth, this X-ish.
They'd have to move the fence.
So that's basically the center of where the road should be, so when we look at this. That's that point that sticks out right there.
Yep.
So it was plodded as if the road center was going this way.
This way. And this over here should be level.
This is from the north looking south, yep. So. That's where it was plodding.
Well, it got built, because plodding is, uh, two D and building is three D, and, uh, it was a lot easier to build the road there than it was to build it where the plats had to build it, so.
So I wonder if they, they're trying to sell it or anything?
Well, they wanna sell it, that's the plan.
What if they, they sell, maybe the next owners don't care, or was it?
I don't know, like I said, the, the, the discussion last meeting was, because Tina had mentioned that that road is encroaching on the lot, and she liked it resolved. And so our decision was, was to ask her if she wanted to sell it and how much. Her sisters are interested in selling it for.
Cause if the next people that buy it, if the next people that buy it, then we're gonna have to, we're gonna be forced to move it anyway.
I guess my opinion is, is I don't know why we'd be forced to move it, because the road existed on top of that lot before we even took control of the road.
The next people that, they're gonna say, hey, this is my, this is my land.
Right, but my point is, is the, the road got developed and onto the lot, and it was encroaching by whoever encroached it, and I don't know. I mean, this is where you'd have to get a lawyer involved, aren't we responsible for that?
That would never supersede.
I'm not gonna make any assumptions, cause I've been wrong a couple times.
I hate to say anything, but you know, I would say boo.
I mean, that's the, I mean, that's the question, is whether or not it's our responsibility, and it is, what's the easiest way to take care of it? Well, if it is our responsibility, the easiest way to take care of it is to purchase the lot.
Yeah.
Cause moving the road, you're gonna have to acquire right-of-way, it's the same deal as Tardowski's, it's pure sand and rock down there, building is gonna be a nightmare. You'll never, you'll never move that road for whatever it costs to pay for the lot, so that's the easiest way to do it, so the question is, is.
That's why I say buy it and then plod the, plod the road out and then sell the rest.
Well, that's a decision.
Yeah, we gotta build the road.
No, we don't, to keep the road that's there.
No, the, the idea would be, Dan, would be to take the road and just cut it out of that lot. Like, we already have that, that area, we would just cut it out and extend it, basically. That lot would shrink down from point three-nine acres to, I'm just winging it here, point two acres.
So that's, it was about a quarter acre.
Right, so you're gonna lose, you know, you're gonna lose, you know, a quarter of that property size, so.
So the county would buy the lot, we'd prob, uh, get the road out of it, so the county would own the road, and then we'd sell the rest of the lot.
Thing is, at what price, what price?
Well, I heard asking price for forty thousand, I don't know if that's negotiable or not.
Maybe you can get forty thousand worth of what's left. I don't.
Well, it's tough to say, I mean, it's just, I mean, those are the questions I needed.
It's negotiable, ish.
I mean, the only other thing would be to discuss it with Joe or something like that, as far as our responsibility is there, because I'm just. My question is, is who owned that lot when the road was built, because. It's Tina's family that developed that area, if they developed it with the intent of encroaching that lot to build that road there, well, that's not really an issue then, but I don't know if there's anything recorded that. Added right-of-way to that lot, I don't think so, otherwise you'd probably know about it, John. Right. But that's what I'm getting at, is like, was the intent to encroach on that lot, go, well, this lot's not that big, and they built it on there anyway, and now we're. Acting like it's a real big encroachment issue, and the fact of the matter was, was that encroached long before we entered. I, I don't know what kind of, is there some kind of, uh, statute of limitations on this? That's the best, most legal one, so. So I guess that's up to the boards to decide if they want. Move forward or something, table it, discuss it.
Yeah, chill.
Sure, but that's the, that's the situation.
Go ahead and, yeah.
Well, for now, we'll just add, do a bunch of business for next month. And see what the decision is.
Walters own that one.
Yep. Okay, now you can finally do whatever you wanna do.
I really don't have much, just, we're, we can touch based on that, that paving that's in your.
Okay.
Projects there, um. There was supposed to be some, a paving project on Wissick this year, I guess it got pushed for some funding, they're still hoping that it goes. So if they were paving in Wissick, we put these out for bids, we'd probably get a more competitive bid, cause we'd be. We'd be competing against that and just Bismarck, cause that's where your asphalt's gotta come from anyway. So you'd probably get a, maybe a better price on it. We'd have to, I'd have to run some numbers again now with these new two projects put in there, to see if we could. Cover these anywhere. Cause we, we're gonna have to, uh. Straighten or put down the. Striping pavement. Paving markings on all our asphalt this year, like.
That's a shame.
Well, it should be, it needs to be done, yeah, like, and, you know, they did it two years ago, and they chip sealed Braddock and Kentire, so those two roads, and, and Hazleton. And then like rodeo ground roads, and every pavement road that we have should be.
Striped.
Striped and the center lines, cause it just needs to be done.
Who does that? You guys hired that out?
Yeah, I mean, we gotta, it's in your pamphlet, estimate was for. Forty-six thousand, so. We're gonna just. We don't really put it out for bids, we're gonna just call a couple of different companies. There's only a few companies out there that do it anyways, so.
Are we gonna do?
Well, that's where we're gonna talk into, cause if we're gonna try to go after a couple of these roads this year, obviously, we're gonna take them out of the pavement markings and. At least be added in there. If we can't do anything, or you guys don't wanna move forward with trying to do anything with them, we'll have to just stripe them this year and. See where they fall next year. So that's, this is just all open for discussion and stuff like that, so.
This is a requirement, but not a requirement.
It's a requirement, it needs to be done. The striping on your. Paving markings on your asphalt needs to be done. Cause it's the no path zones, it's the edge lines, it's all that, so, center line, edge line.
Like in Westfield and Hall, and them kinda, they would do?
We would do them, cause they're, they're asphalt, and we can take them out if you want. But that's, I mean, we're probably pennies on the dollar there. Which road? Oh, it had been at one point, there's some, just faint yellow marks left in there. Right. It's just.
But that's gonna be sealed.
And ninety-five, I believe, was chip sealed, I think that he has it estimated at ninety-five.
You do have it every day.
Chips, chip sealed to ninety-five. Uh, I remember the regulations have changed since nineteen. So they used to do four-inch markings, now we're gonna go six-inch. So, yeah. Kinda to do with the autonomous vehicles coming out and stuff like that, so. Starting to come down. New wave of the future, so.
You can make a little extra money, go with a roller.
A roller, right?
I think Cosmo Braver tried that.
That's kind of a bad deal, sure. I don't have to get a job to be prepared. Yeah, it's a bunch of work, God.
So I mean, we can see if, uh. That one in Wissick's gonna go, if we wanna be, kinda get these bid ready or shovel ready, or. Lay in the weeds with them for another year or something. Once again, no, it's a, not, none of these are very good options, but doing nothing's not an option either.
So are they gonna put a mixed plant over there?
That's the way it sounded, cause it would be big enough to do it.
That's what we're gonna get, estimate.
Cause if we don't, if we don't do anything to the Strasburg Road going west on Strasburg.
That's gonna be done.
Right, then Oregon to, I mean, that's, I believe it was, I mean, that's just, this price is just an overlay, I think.
Do you put restriction on it? They used to every year. Do you still do it?
No, we don't do any, we don't restrict any road.
See, they did it, used to all the time, because what's his name, the ready-made sky for Harry, it's called, but there's signs up, said, yo.
Well, who did that?
Years back, they put on low restriction signs.
They never did it on.
No, not on the gravel on the tar.
And that's been a discussion too, of if we do it, then how do we enforce it and?
Solve the code.
That's a good idea. Hey, that's a good idea.
Oh, they get smart to save the infrastructure. That's what I, I should, I should, Wales. Make people aware of what they're destroying.
But, I mean, we, we could, and, and it's the other stuff that follows with it, it's the enforcement, that's just. Yeah, it's a huge, it's not just. Not just putting up a sign.
It's all.
Right. So. I mean, we don't have to make this decision today too, we're just, I can work some numbers and see if. We can.
Basically, just to clarify, twenty twenty-four, since we're Strasburg West would be an overlay?
Yes.
And that's seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, isn't that the cost?
No, it is overlay at the top.
You know where there's the sink spots?
Yeah, I'm sure they do like leveling paths first and then.
I would think they'd patch it and then come through with a, with an overlay, and it's kinda how they. I would think they'd patch it and then come through with a, with an overlay, that's kinda how they usually do it, but.
Cause that's losing, it's slow.
Yep.
And then, same thing, so the Litten Shop Road, basically, there's only, that's an overlay.
Yeah.
That's three hundred and forty-three thousand.
Correct.
Okay.
And then your twenty twenty-five would be um, the chip sealing and all that.
So twenty twenty-five, the option one for existing pavement on the Litten Shop Road. Is forty thousand, that's for a chip seal on the overlay if you did the overlay.
Right, yep.
And Strasburg's another eighty grand of chip seal. You following your credit?
Yep.
What the one going on down there?
So you're looking at seven hundred and eight hundred.
One point one two miles.
So the reason why it hasn't gotten done. I mean, it's, it's, it's just insane, I just.
And I know guys said they could fix it, I don't know, the cost is so out of line.
It's just so wild.
Right.
And it's only for a mile, I mean, that's the trouble, I mean, it goes right to gravel anyway.
So why did they have to do that?
I don't know.
That was years ago, guys, when Ted Matta was a commissioner, that road, there was, I mean, there were no semis at that time. But with all, there were so many farms, Dad would talk about, my grandfather, they would come in from the west and from the south. And he said that road, that mile was unreal how bad it was, and that used to be old highway eighty-three. And then they pulled it up, it was never high like it is, it was a low road, kinda like going north of my place, a half a mile, going north there and turn us. That's what it was, it was flat. Then the county, and then we took it upon themselves, according to what they talked, I wasn't old enough to see it, they pulled it up. And they paved it. That's why that was done. And he, he was the guy who was instrumental in putting up the Stradler Nursery. Cause that was Ted Matta Nursery number one.
Pavement in Evans County is whoever was the most motivated commissioner at that time, cause Mike Braddock and Kintyre got all that pavement and all that out, whoever was up there was, if you push, was pretty tough. Guys needs to toughen up so you can get areas where you get pavement in your area.
And you don't really wanna tear it up.
Well, it's a shame, you hate to get rid of pavement, you never wanna get rid of it, but gosh, at that cost.
And I mean, if, if you were gonna ever think about doing that, I would step it back away from that state highway quite a ways first. So the dust and that intersection, that's already kind of a bad intersection.
Well, and then you have that curb too, like you, and it'd be tough to maintain, like, that's probably why they paved it too, is cause it's not just a straight intersection, you have that curb.
But it used to be, until a semi coming off of the mile.
Right.
Turned to go north and that slope, it took its load and it flipped him and threw him in the ditch.
That's what I'm saying, maintaining a super elevation of a curb like they do now is very difficult with gravel, it's gonna be a nightmare, that's why. Even keeping it paved, a half a mile might be a better option than no pavement, but I, I don't.
Well, that could've just been a few years ago.
Yeah, probably what, fifteen years ago, yeah, see if that.
Fifteen years is a lot longer to me and Skylar than it is you guys, I guess.
State off eighty-three back to the dump ground road, maybe an eighth of a mile or quarter.
Yeah.
The state still goes back with the sand and the snowplow. They'll go back to the dump town road and turn around and go back to the highway.
Well, part of that is the right way, I think, if they go deep in there a little bit further than they got.
Well, you take the road going south of the rodeo ground from the Alberta site down. I don't know how that got paved, that used to be old highway eighty-three.
Well, I, I, I mean, just to even, just kinda forward the conversation a little bit, I think the option of overlaying the, the shop road. You have the city lagoon on it.
You.
You have the major bridge there, you got residences and you have the golf course.
You got a lot of traffic on that.
I mean, that's where, I mean, if you're gonna spend the money, at least that, not to mention the county shop and the value of having that paved, at least just for dust control, driving by, if you turn that to gravel. You'd dust out every one of them deals on the way there too, which is probably why it got paved, you know? Why did it only get paved in the county shop? Well, when you're driving trucks and there's, there's a dozen vehicles every day, just people going to work, there's vendors, and you, it's just a lot of dust, so I'm sure that was a main reason too, so. That one, you know.
There's no doubt.
That one's probably gotta get.
Dust control, by my place, dust control.
Building golf courses.
You're retired, just water.
Yeah, I'm tired about, yeah, yeah, you're retired, nobody cares about coming water on it, yeah.
Yeah, you got the water there.
Yeah.
But that's, that's something too there.
Yeah, but I don't know why they all got paid an enemy.
I don't know either, but we're the one, we're the lucky ones that get stuck with the big, you know, fix it, so.
Well, they paved it and they said, right, the last thirty years I won't be around then.
They know the length and they're coming off eighty-three up there to go into the church coming into Maine.
Yeah.
Why did that get paved?
Right. Well, and that one probably had some city influence on that one, because people viewed that as the city too.
Was that City Limon?
Well, that was where we came up with that.
At one time, I'm not sure what's.
It's actually a county road that's gonna get.
It is, and we, we have that, you know, that agreement in place already, but that's where, I mean, there was probably some city, county, same with the one going by, well, it's the Vet Shack now.
Yeah.
That got paved, cause it was.
Highway eighty-three?
It was beneficial for everybody too, though, the county, the city, everybody, so stuff like that got done, same with that Federal Lake Road on the east side of Hazleton. You know, why the heck did that get paved? Well, cause most people in town didn't want the dust, and the county's like, well, we can pave part of it, and they just got it done, you know? They probably paved that one on the way to Braddock and Kintyre, I guess, so I don't know, that one. How the heck them guys got that done back in the day was pretty impressive, but.
They did it, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know, I mean.
Get some.
I guess look into, look into some quotes or see if that Wishing project affects the price a little bit, and maybe it makes a decision on whether or not we can wait or if we should do it now.
Do you think they could overtake a look at that?
Well, I mean, I don't think that they need to take a look at it, we're just, we'll put it out for bids at the same time or.
Yeah.
Shortly after them, so that.
We can reject the bids if they come in too high or something, but.
Yeah, nobody, I mean, we have already, Wolves looked at it and that's what they figured, we'll just overlay it and stuff.
Well, if they don't build a plant and they truck it out of Bismarck, then it would be really big, that's getting me a long ways to truck it though, but.
Maybe that same contractor's just doing that over there will be good.
Right, so we'll just bid it not, trialie kinda with, at the same time, right around the same time, so.
But I know when we discuss some of these pavement things, the assumption that every time there's a pavement job, there's gonna be a plant, that's out the window, because it. Physically, they can truck it from Bismarck quite a ways before they set up a plant, so that's why. Cause even with our idea before, we were gonna try and combine it with Litten's paving project, well, Litten's contractor supposedly is, they're not gonna set up a plant, cause by the time they do that, they can drive out of Bismarck. So then it really didn't save us any money, because they're not mobilizing nothing, it would just be more trucks, so, cause we thought, well, heck, we'll save some money, save a nickel, it didn't matter at all, so. So us doing it in conjunction with Litten doesn't make it. And we think it would be. After the plaza, yeah, so it's gonna be July, August, like July, August, September, this, this fall, they just wanna wait till after the centennial, so. And the only benefit with any of that was maybe getting a contractor that would competitively bid it, but it isn't gonna save anything on mobilization or quality or nothing, so. So anyway, that was kind of a downer, so I guess you could try that with this Wishing one and see if somebody competitively wants to bid it. Maybe they don't even want it and they shoot it way high, then it really didn't make any sense, I don't know, so.
Well, I guess we'll wait and see if that, their, their funding comes in and then.
Sure.
If that funding comes in, then we'll have to decide if we wanna bid on both or just take one out of the equation and however it goes, so.
Who did the project of eighteen oh four last summer?
That, I'm not sure.
The county, or was it at, was it highway thirteen north all the way up to. Say, or Mary College, or they call it?
Oh.
That was in Minnesota.
Yeah, I, don't quote me, but I believe it was Central Specialties.
Who?
Central Specialties?
Nope.
No, it wasn't them?
I can't remember the name, or.
Yeah, I don't know, I know Central Specialties does a lot of paving. Central Specialties is a pretty huge company, that's why they're also in doing culverts. Okay, well, we'll wait and see, hopefully, they know if that funding's gonna come through, so.
Okay.
They're gonna bid it, and that, not much.
Does the, does the county hire out the hall ground, when does somebody that wants it on their driveway or on their right of way?
Like, can they, can the person pay the county to haul it on there?
Right.
No.
Okay.
No. We've, we've gone away from selling gra- gravel to residents or citizens, and then, yeah, we don't truck it for anything. We, there's, there's other people that do it in the county, so.
We, we kinda came to that conclusion, we didn't wanna take that opportunity from other people too.
We can't compete, can't beat.
Kel, Kelvin and Myron Bush, there's, there's quite a few guys, and I know Ken Wobon's selling gravel out of there, if you can get a truck or two, but. We kinda agreed we didn't wanna try to take anything off their plate. Okay, so that's it for the road department then.
Sounds wicked.
Thanks, Tyler.
What happened, what happened with that state truck, did you remember?
Yes, we did.
Have you seen in a lot, it's fifteen grand, what happened, or is that wrong?
Nope, that's what happened.
Did it go to an independent, did you have to sell it to a state or a government?
No, it went to an independent guy out of Williston.
Oh, did, it's gone?
Yep, he picked it up yesterday.
Thank you card inside.
Was it a thank you card for us?
Yeah, inside to him.
Yep, I've seen how, yeah.
Okay.
No, yeah, it's, it left yesterday, so.
The blade, everything's gone.
Everything's gone, it's kinda can wash our hands of that headache.
About what, a thirty grand hit?
What's that?
About a thirty thousand dollar loss?
Little less, but, I mean, we, the lesson that we did get a little bit of work out of it, so, I mean, yeah.
I hear you.
Well, we made money on the ditcher, so I guess it comes out.
Right, well.
It's part of, you know.
I did also purchase a crack sealing tank last commission meeting, we were talking about it, we did, we did get one. It's about a two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollar savings.
Can we keep these?
Yeah, just the folders.
Just, yeah, the folders, so we're just working the logistics out on getting it moved.
So we'll be able to store it on the back seal then?
Eleven thousand five hundred gallon tank it was. Yeah.
It's huge.
Yep, we bought it from a different county though. They are just working on emptying it a little bit, that they, they thought they had less oil in there than they. And that they tried to load it and it was too heavy, so they have to get rid of it, they have to heat it and give it a.
You gotta set the pads for it.
We're gonna set some concrete pad there.
How confident it looks with your seal, and seal rack? We got your signs on, your cutting edges.
Really cleaning up out there, I mean. Some of that's just thank God for an open winner, this is stuff that's wanted to be done for a long time, and, you know, it's, it's coming along. At least we'll be able to see what. What's going there, so, yeah. Okay, if there's nothing else, then that's.
I think the court services contract with City Aids, but I think we'll uh, we'll, we'll push till after the uh, meeting with Derek Rotten there, Brian, just. Before the summit safety discussion will start now, Joe, make sure that that's all I got. Yeah, Joe's gonna be on, though, I think one issue, so. Wouldn't have to be back till one thirty, we can squeeze in a lunch break in forty-five minutes, if not, whatever, but I think we should take a little break. So why don't we just, it's twelve forty-five now, why don't we just come back at like one fifteen, and if Joe's here, we can do some of these other things and.
One fifty?
One fifteen, so it gives us a half hour. Tolerable?
So we're gonna do some other stuff before the executive, because I don't wanna have a pretty short video, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Well, tell you what, why don't we just, why don't we just let everybody come back in at like twenty after, just make sure here before one thirty, cause when we get in, that's kind of a hard time, so. You have forty-five minutes, forty-four minutes. Yeah, so we're just gonna, we're gonna take a break until one.
One twenty, one thirty?
Yeah.
One twenty-nine.
Yeah, one twenty-nine, we'll be adjourned.